This conference will now be recorded.
Well, she's muted right now.
Zach, did you turn on the amplifier?
So we can she hear us?
He's saying they can't hear.
Oh, got it, got it, okay. Can you hear me for this?
I can. You're very garbled. It's too loud.
How about now?
Better.
Better?
Better.
Better?
Better.
Okay, so can you hear Cease?
Can you hear me? Loud and clear.
Okay, so it magically started working.
Now, when you get rid of the echo, Judge, if you sit over here, they'll be able to get you on camera. You don't want to be on camera. That's another thing.
I'm here. I can't see though.
All right.
I couldn't get on at all. I mean, audio. I just pushed audio and it says mute off.
All right. I will. We will start again. I will call to order the Tuesday, June 15th meeting of the Monmouth City Council and ask Phyllis Bowman for the roll call, please.
Counselor Belts. Here. Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor McKeel.
Here.
Counselor Oberst.
Here.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Here.
Mayor Oberst. Our mayor Coons, darn it.
Finally got her.
I am here. And we will do the flag salute this evening. And Counselor Carey, can you lead us in that, please?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our consent calendar this evening consists of the minutes of the meeting of June 1st. If there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar submitted.
As you request, salute.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Oberst and Counselor Belts for the second. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to citizen comments. As always, our citizen comments are entertained at this time. We limit individuals to three minutes. We typically do not respond to those comments, except to ask clarifying questions, but we'll respond in writing or by a phone call. And we have no one here with us in chambers. Phyllis, are there any public comments that were mailed in or anyone online who has indicated they would like to comment?
Mayor Coons, we did not receive any comments.
All right. Thank you. We will jump right into our business agenda. And this evening, we have a couple of guests with us to start off with a discussion about goings on at the library board. We have the chair of our library advisory board here in the room with us, Judge Bill Horner. And we had Krist online. I don't know where she went, but we'll go ahead and hear about what's going on at the library now that we're starting to inch back to normal.
Sort of.
Here's Krist.
Well, thank you, Mayor Coons and councilpersons. I was also online, except, I don't know if that's a correct term, except I audio couldn't do it. It just says audio is off. No matter where I click it, it said that. So I don't know what I did wrong, but it pays to live close. So I got in the car and I was sort of dress appropriate. Anyway, it's been my pleasure to be the chairman of this library board for more years than I can count. And it's been a pleasure to do that. And we have, on an annual basis, come before you and give a short talk. I have a sheet here as to the members, so I don't forget who they are, because I always do that. I learned that never to name people and thank them. Just say everybody. So we have Brent Wolf. He's a member that has been on for a long time, has Carol Harding and Madeline Hall. Then our new-ish person, sort of, is Nancy Bowles. And then the newest person is Leslie Lloyd. They've been on the committee. We meet, we have, historically, we have met on a monthly basis at seven o'clock in the morning. Recently, we've gone to a every other month board meeting during this situation that we have. The library board, the library, excuse me, closed on March 16, 2020. And I didn't realize it, but according to Chris Cheaton notes that she gave me, within a year and a day, we opened. So it opened on March 17, 2021. During that period of time, a short period of time, the employees were working at home. But then they came on a modified basis and were working in person during the library, in the library and doing a lot of things, even though the library was closed. Sometimes shortly, they began a, I don't know what else you call it, but you call, you you reserve a book. And then there were times in the afternoon that you called in advance that I'll be there on a certain date, a certain time. You're given the time. And you drive into the library area and then they have somebody there come and bring the book out for you. So that was done. And then the books are quote quarantine for, I think, some of these something days, some hours in the meeting room that they have there. And they continue to do that. But the library board, the library is open, so I'm not sure why people do that, but some prefer not to go in, so they they don't and they call, they can't call in. Physical things that were done is that there were two projects for, the library had, sidewalk has crumbled in parts. And so in two different phases, they were replaced. A two HVAC units were installed in, well, a year ago now. Other things that, and then there's some broken seals that were replaced and those were done. And then if you go into the library now, it, well, you can still recognize it, but it's the shelving and have been removed and moved about and expanded because to make it a more flowable layout than it was before. And also to increase shelving. And so that took time. And then they Monmouth, I don't know if it's their first or one of the few, but we have a seed library, a lending library. No, it's not lending. You take it. But we have the seeds and we give them out. You can come and take them and hopefully use them. So that that began as two different ones. One, they did it by mail. And then they did it along with the with the call. And you reserve the seeds and they would be available for you in the in the drive through. And let's see, then they reopened the Dropbox was done in June. They have something called a four H basic program with O H extension and the four H. They did a couple of things with the four H program and join, and they do it visually. And they had, okay, the curbside service that I referred to began a year ago, June 15. And it's and they put, they put the books in a bag and then hand you the bag and then you got an extra bag. So they received a grant from United Way and they combined that with the money from the Friends of the Library. And then they gave away books at the students that were going to the central school and having the meal pickup. But that location, they would give out books and they told 500 children and teens, each received three books during that book giveaway. They partnered with the Monmouth Public Works to create a Monmouth Story Walk in the parks. They began that in June of 2020. And the Public Works people built the stands and then that holds the pages to the books and you can go around and read those. And these all circled. Well, they have a number of visual programs that they've done. They partnered with the Polk County Four Hers on a number of reading books and also on basic baking basics. That was held. Again, this is all done digitally. The library wasn't open until, as I said, in March 17. And it's open now. The hours are Tuesdays through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And Saturdays, they're open a shorter time, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. In the afternoon. And then the curbside pickup is continues Monday through Fridays, 10 to 4. The only, not the only thing they do, the books, if you return your books, they still through the Dropbox. Excuse me, well, Dropbox is out on the other side of the of the building. So that's still, rather than dropping the books off in the library, they come in externally, less contact. They used to also take books in magazines and donations. They're not doing that as of yet. They're not open, ready to do that yet. All in all, even though the library was closed for a substantial period of time, things were going on and the library was providing library services to the citizens of Monmouth through this period of time. I think it's commendable to the staff that we have, or you have, we all have.
Great.
I don't know about great, but it's done.
Hey. Good to know what all was going on.
And our council liaison is there at seven o'clock in the morning.
Yes, she is. Any questions for either Chair Horner or for our librarian, Krist Oberst? Or comments? John.
Just an alert perhaps, and probably more for you, Krist, than than for Bill. But at a chance encounter with a former counselor at, from state in Oregon. And he's kind of on a crusade to obtain a large amount of books from the city of Houston. And he didn't give me many details, but very passionate about it. Apparently, their library was damaged somewhat in one of the last hurricanes.
Harvey. Harvey was the big one.
Yeah. And and so FEMA is going to be replacing a number of, well, virtually all of their entire library. And somehow, he's got it in his mind that it's available and if we could pool resources to somehow get the shipping covered, freight up here. So he's got my card. He told me he'd be outreaching to me. He's not done that. If he ever does, Krist, I'm going to forward it on to you. And obviously, we won't, you know, I mean, who knows? But just bit of a heads up. So.
All right. Yes, Counselor McKeel.
Yes. And first, I want to just thank the library director, Krist Oberst, sorry, for the, and the library staff for making such an effort to make sure that people kept getting books all through COVID. I was actually enjoyed that several times. So thank you for that. Now that we are moving to becoming more open, I was wondering what was the thinking process of not opening up in the evenings? So everything is like 10 to four, 10 to one. Is there a reason that the library is not going to open for the evenings?
We, it's more of a phase in for us to ramp up. We're kind of at, for staff now, we're kind of at capacity for the hours that we can cover. Because we haven't invited our volunteers back. And so maybe next step would be inviting our volunteers back, giving them some refreshers and some some training and getting that all worked out and then proceeding with, because we're not even allowing seating yet. So allowing people to stay longer and do seating. And then so it's a gradual progression to help us, you know, not just jump off the deep end and flail about, but to be more measured and thoughtful in how we're providing our services.
So that makes sense. But I'm wondering 10 to four instead of like noon to six, which would put, you know, bump a little bit when people would sometimes be off work.
I don't, I can't really recall the thought process of how we came to 10 to four. I really, I don't. It's been a busy year. So yeah, that's all things that we can look at. We are looking at, we're always looking at how, and things are changing so quickly about how things are opening up and and more things are happening and people can do more things. So again, we're trying to look at how we can best handle that. The staff has been very flexible over the course of the year. They've had to change their schedule several times. And so it's a matter of getting the schedule all jumbled around, getting those volunteers back, getting some training so we can increase the hours. Because the staff are having to do their work plus the volunteers' work. So we can get the volunteers back in. That will give them a little more time that we can have more hours, more desk service hours. So it is a work in progress, as it has been the whole year.
Thank you. And Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Coons. I wanted to ask about summer reading. And I know that it's so different this year, but wondering what type of activities or events may be for children and families of the summer that at the library, even if it's.
Summer readings have started today for all ages. We have the reading challenge for all ages, babies through 100-plus years. We're, we keep statistics that we have to report to the state library every year, and they've been kind of tweaking it. This year, they want to know the amount of time read for everybody. So it's sort of simplified our reading program part of it is everybody, for every 20 minutes you read, you mark off a thing on a reading log. And you can do multiple reading logs and it gives you more chances to win prizes. And so for the reading part of it, that that's all good to go. There'd be several virtual programs and take and make kit pickups. We're going to have a couple adult craft take and make activities. And so the only thing, really, the only thing that's completely different is we aren't having any in-person programming. Like still so, but we will have some performers, some good performers, and we're tying, trying to tie our take and make kits with those performers. So we have a magician coming on a Thursday. And that Tuesday before the take and make is a magic kit that the kids can come pick up and they could play around with. And then they bring it to the program on Thursday and they get to learn some magic tricks. So it's kind of, we have an author who's coming to give a virtual tour of her studio and talk about what she does and read a book. And then they've got a little art project that the Tuesday before, they'll come pick up the supplies for that and they get to do it with with the author virtually. So we're trying to tie some of those things together and provide really engaging experiences for for everyone and doing the best we can. And we have a new story walk coming out soon, too.
Thank you.
Counselor McKeel will take another comment.
And I thank you for mentioning the story walk. Actually, I was really pleased to see that in Main Street Park. That's what a wonderful idea. So thank you for that. I forgot to mention that earlier. So sorry. Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you. And hopefully, we can keep kids entertained and learning over the summer. The school district is allowing returning students to keep their Chromebooks over the summer. So hopefully, that will help with students who want to access things and should have that ability to do so. And hopefully, those programs will continue to serve lots and lots of kids this summer. Sounds fun. Thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Chair Horner, for running over and joining us. Good to see you.
I'm going to take off my second oldest grandson is wrestling for Twaloxin today. Hopefully, I'll be, my laptop will work better than.
Well, at least they don't need to hear you, or maybe they do. Okay.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you. Our next item of business, we actually have to officially hear the canvas of the vote from the May election and our city recorder, Phyllis Bowman, will present that to us.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, I am going to just give you this as information only. This is a canvas of the vote. A special election was held in Polk County, Oregon on May 18, 2021. The ballot included a general obligation bond for a new city hall ballot measure number 27-133. The vote was as follows. Yes, 1,123 votes, which is 60.41%. No votes, 736, which is 39.59%. There were 13 undervotes, which means neither, they voted neither yes nor no. So the votes, vote total votes cast were 1,872. And attached to your staff report is the official results.
Great. Thank you for that. Our item of business, we have at our June meeting, we usually look at those amazing volunteers who are serving on our boards and commissions. And they have rotating terms. We have before us a list of individuals who have served on these committees and are actually willing to continue to be reappointed for another term. And I think we, we look at these names and Judge Horner was one of them, and he mentioned Carol Harding. Just an example of some of the folks who have done this year after year after year and continue to volunteer a number of hours to our tree advisory board, senior boards, library, our historic commission parks and rec and arts and culture. We also have a few folks who will not be continuing and are moving on in their community service. And we will be sending a note to thank them for the work that they've done. So really, I cannot say enough thanks to these people, especially serving during this crazy time in some of these boards and commissions. And tonight, we have an opening. One of the resignations we had was Susan Fuller from the Monmouth Engaged Committee, University Community Connections. As Ms. Fuller and her husband Rex Fuller will be leaving town upon his retirement. And Emily Mensah has applied to take a position on that committee. She not only lives in Monmouth, but she also works for the school district. And I know the committee was hoping to tie in more with other community-wide organizations like the school district. So we have some reappointments, some, and one new appointment to consider this evening. There is a proposed motion in your pocket.
Madam mayor, I would move to reappoint the listed applicants to their respective boards and commissions and to appoint Emily Mensah to the Monmouth Engaged University Committee Connections, or I'm sorry, University Connections Committee.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Carey, and I think Counselor Salinas Oliveros for the second. And any discussion about that? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Thank you for that unanimous recommendation to keep our boards and missions active and going.
Madam mayor, if I could just, Phyllis, if you have a notion of any empties, positions that you could send around to council to see if there's any recruitment that could happen, that would be good. We appreciate that. Thanks.
I will.
Thank you. All right. We have a couple of items of action items, some resolutions here. And our first order of business is with Russ Cooper, our Public Works Director. So take it away, Russ.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Attached for your consideration is Resolution 1925. It's a resolution that establishes two-hour parking restrictions on the south side of Jackson Street between Warren and Monmouth Avenue. It's before you because council adopts resolutions that allow for the installation and subsequent enforcement of traffic control measures in Monmouth. This came about, business owner of the donut bar located behind 191 Monmouth Avenue North approached the city with a request to create some short-duration parking stalls adjacent to their business to be consistent with with our parking, I'll say, standards in the downtown core. That was our recommendation to implement two-hour parking restrictions on the diagonal parking stalls along that block. As you'll see in the resolution, the the signs will read two-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., except Sundays and holidays. It's believed that regular turnover in these vehicles in this area will provide sufficient opportunities for food cart customers to visit the food carts. As I identify, and we've done this in the past, when we establish new parking restrictions, we work with the CSO, with the police department in doing some public education before we move to enforcement. As far as financial implications, there's about $1,100 in materials and labor to install. And then will be the Public Works Department Street Fund will be responsible for the ongoing cost of maintaining these signs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, there's a proposed motion in your staff report.
Great. And questions of Russ? Counselor Oberst?
This isn't really for Russ. It's more for Marty. We have a long history of not enforcing parking in Monmouth. And I'm just wondering, does that continue, even though we're now, I mean, it's almost a joke on campus that, you know, you can park wherever you want to and you don't have to worry about getting a ticket because Monmouth doesn't enforce parking. And so I just, you know, I, I favor the idea of putting these slots here, Russ. I do have concerns that it's just another block of places that people are gonna park and not pay any attention to the signs because they never get any tickets.
Would you like her to address it? Or was that a rhetorical question?
Yes, either way. That, that was a yes.
I'm not sure that I'm gonna have a perfect answer for you, Counselor Oberst, but, um, among staff, Mr. Cooper and also Chief Haynes, we had a discussion about enforcement and what could be done to be, to begin to, um, look at enforcement. Because we have heard from some of our board and commission members as well that it's, you know, the same point that you just made, that we're gonna, we, if the enforcement really is what makes the difference between, you know, having any regulations there at all. So I, I, all I can say is that we've talked about it. I don't think we have a plan in place to do anything specifically related to this. And I would invite Chief Haynes, if he has anything else that he'd like to mention on that front.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I, I really wish that, um, it was a little bit better. Um, I guess we, we, I agree with you, Counselor Oberst. I think that in order to have, um, we need to be obviously enforcing that. However, it's one of those things that we don't have currently. We don't have the bandwidth to do that. Our CSO works part-time, as you know, um, and I think one of the hardest things to be consistent with all of the parking. Um, and that would take probably some, some personnel to make happen. We don't, we just don't have the time currently, but I, uh, as Director Cooper mentioned, generally speaking, whenever we've made some changes to parking, um, you know, we'll, we'll spend a couple of weeks or a couple of months really trying to educate people, and that's by way of warnings and being out and making contact with people. Uh, from there, we deal with, with, uh, parking on a complaint basis. So, um, it's not the best answer. It's just, it's what we have currently and, uh, but it's kind of where, where we're at.
Yes. And Counselor Belts and then Counselor McKeel?
Um, perhaps through the budget process next year, we can look at the increased potential based on fines and personnel cost to bring somebody in that could do enforcement. Because it's true, if everybody knows that you're not gonna get a ticket, everyone's just going to break the law, basically. So I think it's something we should look at budget-wise.
Another comment, if I may, I, um, I know that our community economic development director, Duffner, has noted that, um, uh, we had planned to do a study at some point in the coming year of downtown parking. And I think that will give us some more information, both about where we have the greatest pinch points and where an enforcement program might be most useful. So.
Great. Counselor McKeel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm actually, having that data would be very helpful because I look at a two-hour parking requirement or parking limit with, uh, the punishment of a ticket is if you have lots of trouble parking. Uh, but we don't have that problem in Monmouth. It's, it's, uh, I think people say two, you know, there's the two-hour there and people kind of like, some people monitor it, some people don't. But it's not like Salem where you can't find a place to park and you need to have that, that limit. So I, I kind of look at the, the two-hour parking signs is, allows the city to step in and issue tickets, as I think Chief Haynes was talking about, if there's some problem because they don't have any parking in that street every, any, at any time. And I, I'm sorry, I'm just, just mumbling away. I've been spending way too much time with my grandkids this week and I'm just gonna have to claim, you know, grandmother exhaustion. But, uh, anyway, I'm gonna try it one more time. I, I, I think it's fine that we're not issuing tickets right now. It, it allows us, having that two-hour limit does allow us to take care of problems when they exist. And I apologize for the, the rambling.
Thank you. And, and I have one question, Russ. Do, do we have any provision for 15-minute spots? If this doesn't fix things, do we have those anywhere in town?
We, we do have a couple of spaces. What, what we've, uh, I guess, the, the, I'll either call it a concern or, I, I guess the concern with that is that, uh, would be trying to identify when is a 15-minute zone appropriate over, you know, is that a, is that a, a particular businesses number of trips? Or, and then we've seen, uh, we have a, we do have a few of those in town. And now they're, they're located in front of businesses that they really make no sense that they're in front of those businesses.
We have two in front of Master Appliance, as I recall from when it used to be the post office.
That's a good example.
Yeah.
Well, that was supposed to have been corrected a year ago.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Okay. I had not noticed.
Okay. So just, yeah, just question if, if there continues to be a, a question about it, it is an option we could always look at. That was the question. So, okay. All right. Uh, Counsel Lopez and then Counsel Carrie and then we'll.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and Mr. Cooper, is, is the wording in these signs, um, is that consistent with the wording that's used in other signs throughout the city? I've been in cities in the past and I, I haven't noticed this here, but where the, the days of enforcement and wording is not, uh, not consistent. So, um, you know, excluding Sundays versus Saturdays, et cetera. Um, is that, is that a concern here?
So the wording is consistent with what we're, you know, what we've used in Monmouth. Where Monmouth is inconsistently consistent in their application of no parking in the downtown corridor.
Yes, yes, that's, uh, that's been, uh, that's been covered. Um, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that the wording is, uh, is consistent with other signage, um, in other spots. And then my, my next question is, is there a demonstrated need? Um, here, I, I, I read through the report and didn't see any objective data. And maybe, maybe this is too small of a thing to gather a lot of objective data, but, uh, aside from, you know, aside from, uh, you know, a business owner saying, hey, I'd like one here. Um, what are our criteria? Um, and what, what problem, I guess, is, uh, is, is this trying to address?
Usually where these signs are applied, there are businesses that are adjacent to this space. And it's, it is usually or typically or almost always in that downtown corridor. And the particular location, uh, that, for this request is, is well-known as, we'll call it auxiliary university parking, that, uh, often students will come or even staff will come, park, and those vehicles will remain there for, until that, that individual leaves. And so the, there is turnover in their space, in those spaces. Uh, but they tend to maintain max, you know, 100% capacity, uh, throughout the day, uh, during the week when, uh, school is in session.
Thank you. And, and that, that brings one more question, which I promise will be my final one. Um, with, uh, with that, uh, that, um, uh, issue of the auxiliary or overflow parking from the university, uh, will any of our outreach efforts involve reaching out to the university as far as education on those spaces? Or will our outreach be more responsive and limited to just those two physical spaces? Are we gonna send something to the university saying, hey, you know, the, the, these spaces are changing?
Uh, we can certainly, uh, the last time we did it, we did a mix of both, you know, it was, it was, uh, the CSO working onsite in the field. And then we also have worked with the university when we changed, uh, parking restrictions up there. So, yes, I think that's a, a great idea. Typically how we handle that is we work with the, uh, our, our counterparts in the physical, the park, uh, physical, uh, physical plant. And then they, uh, do some sort of mass emailing to folks on campus.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counsel Carrie, you wanna wrap, wrap it up for us?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things I think we want to be conscious of and alert for, too. I, I think because of the proximity to the park, uh, it will impact park users. You know, from time to time, especially the, once we get the, the splash park going again, kids are not gonna wanna hang. You know, they're not gonna be limited to two hours. I mean, so we're just gonna wanna be sensitive and, and, and keep an eye on that and to see if there's any adjustment that might, should be made as, as a result. Um, you know, I want, well, one of the things I would have liked to have seen, but it's not really, I guess, critical, is where the other parking, two-hour parking zones are. And my recollection is, is that they are up on, um, you know, Monmouth Avenue between Jackson and Maine, certainly. And, and East of Clay, we have had some, uh, enhanced enforcement in those areas. So this makes good sense to wrap around. I think it's a good idea. I think it'll be a bit of a learning curve. And, and while the problem that we're trying to solve may not be evident right now, I can guarantee you it will be once the new Monmouth Commons comes online. Uh, that will become de facto Monmouth Commons parking without this. And while I don't remember it clearly, but I did study BF Skinner as an undergrad. And the concept of operant conditioning is, is pretty effective, uh, which is to say intermittent, uh, punishment and reward. So we don't have to enforce that all the time. Uh, we enforce it periodically and that, that makes the impression. So, you know, we don't need to have somebody walking up and down with a fat ticket bu, uh, book in their pocket, but periodically coming by and, you know, nailing the, uh, the, the abusers. So, um, so, so I think it's a good idea. Applaud you for bringing it like you did. And, uh, I think we'll just need to learn from it as it goes.
Make the motion?
And so therefore, I would move approval of Resolution 1925, a resolution establishing two-hour parking on the south side of Jackson Street West between Warren and Monmouth Avenue.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Carrie and Counselor Belts. And assuming there's no further discussion, we'll have Phyllis call the roll.
Counselor Lopez?
Yay.
Counselor Belts?
Yes.
Counselor McKeel?
Yes.
Counselor Carrie?
Aye.
Counselor Salinas Oliveros?
Aye.
Counselor Oberst?
Yeah.
Passes six zero.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And another resolution. And I believe we will, uh, have Janet Schnard, our finance director, report to us about inter-fund activity to wrap up this fiscal year.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. Yes, it sounds pretty familiar from the last meeting. I know. Um, it relates to our, uh, police, um, station general obligation bond fund. There were some good questions from the Counselors' Johns regarding the, um, the reason for the shortfall. So I've tried to, um, answer that as well in my staff report. Um, in addition, what actually transpired and why I'm bringing this to you, uh, this week rather than having done it two weeks ago is that the, um, state budget law expert that I normally deal with, who was on vacation when I spoke to the other state budget law expert about how to deal with the transfers, um, uh, came back from vacation and responded that if we wanted to make it an inter-fund loan, we should probably have done that as part of the transfer resolution. Um, and so with this staff report, um, I am suggesting that we, in fact, do make it an inter-fund loan or recommending that. However, of course, we don't have to do that. We can leave the general fund dollars in, uh, if we end up transferring any in the, in a geo-bond fund and just use them for that payment purpose. But additionally, to the points that were raised last time, um, I did call, uh, or put another call into the, um, finance director at the county who coincidentally was also on vacation, uh, the week that I was working on, um, our, um, staff report, the previous staff report. And so, um, she did get back to me, um, just last week and, uh, suggested that know that in fact, collections are coming in as expected. And, um, so I went back to the drawing board to, uh, make sure that I knew why we were having, experiencing this shortfall. And it has to do, frankly, with an adjustment that I made about three years ago to our, uh, collections and, and discount factors. For many years, I used a collection and discount factor for property tax collections, um, for, uh, permanent levy rates, like, or not permanent levy, sorry, for dollar levy rates, like, uh, general obligations bonds that incorporated, incorporated our, our typical collection level, which is, can be anywhere from 96% to 98%. And a discount factor, um, for those folks who pay their property tax bills early, which can be up to 3%. Um, and so the, the range of the average there is often 2% to 3%, depending on who pays early. Obviously, in this market, a lot more people are paying at the three, are, are paying early because, uh, they can take advantage of a 3% discount, which is a pretty good yield compared to interest rates that they might get by holding on to those funds. So all of that to say, um, back in the day, from starting in 2015, uh, we had a fairly generous and very typical, um, discount and collection rate that built up our fund balance, and that is not a best practice. So, uh, back in 2019, I decreased that, uh, well, actually, assumed we would get more and thereby decreased what we levied. And that caught up with us this year. So, um, all of that, well, it actually caught up with us last year by a little bit, but we still had, I still projected a higher fund balance than we ended up getting. And so all of that to say, um, we did get another $4,000 just last week. Um, so the $10,000 won't happen. However, that's the amount that we've appropriated. So I'm suggesting that our inter-fund loan number mirror that. And, um, but I expect that we will probably be looking at something less than $5,000 actually, because we'll get another 1,000 to 1,500 with our final turnover, uh, based on last year's turnovers. Um, and so all of that to say, um, that the rationale remains the same, um, is that we can't have a negative fund balance. So we do need to do a transfer. And the question becomes, um, whether or not we should treat that as an inter-fund loan or not. And so I've put a resolution in packets to recommend that we, uh, turn it into an inter-fund loan so that the monies can be put back in the general fund for use there, um, when our new permanent, or our new, uh, flat dollar levy for this year, uh, brings in enough money to hopefully, um, ensure that we can pay it back. And with that, I would take questions.
Are there any questions?
I, I think this is pretty simple. I would like to just go ahead, write to the motion and, and be about Counselor Oberst before he does it.
All yours.
I move that Resolution 1926 be approved to authorize an inter-fund loan from the general fund to the police station geo-bond debt service fund using transfer authority created in Resolution 1917.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel McKeel for the motion and Counsel Oberst for the second. Are there any additional questions of Janet?
Cease, I have a, just an observation.
Thank you, Lane. Yes.
Uh, I just noticed the, uh, the motion refers to Resolution 1917 in the title. Apparently, the title of the resolution refers to 2017.
That was corrected.
That was correct.
Yeah. I notified the council that it was correct. Yeah.
2017 is correct?
1917 is correct.
Okay, that'll be changed in the resolution to get signed.
Yes. Yes, I've already changed it.
All right.
Thank you for picking up on that. She caught her Scribner's error, so I think we'll be okay when we're completed. All right. Uh, seeing no additional questions, Phyllis, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Counsel Carrie?
Aye.
Also, Counselor Salinas Oliveros? Counselor, Counselor Salinas Oliveros.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Oberst.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor McKeel.
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Janet. And we now, moving on to a discussion we've had about Bird scooters and an opportunity to have a new alternate transportation method in our community. So Marty, is this one yours or?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counselors. Tonight, we have before you an ordinance, Ordinance 1398, to consider, to create new provisions that would regulate the providers of electric stand-up scooters here in Monmouth. And we also have provided to you, although it's not for any action by the council, a set of administrative rules that would also guide the way the scooters would operate here in Monmouth. So you'll remember back in the spring, you heard from a representative from the Bird Scooter Company, and they've expressed a desire to come and, and operate in Monmouth. And we don't really have any way to guide their operations. So what this ordinance does is to create a license that would allow them, that they would come and apply for. It defines the, what we know about the way e-scooters, electric scooters operate, provides for a license that is a two-year license. We're proposing that the initial license is, it's for two years and it would be for $500 and then would renew at a lower rate of $200. And we also are proposing a per-ride fee. And you'll be seeing that in a separate resolution that will come after, if, if you consider the ordinance and decide to pass it, will bring you a fee resolution that has the structure for, for that license. In the meantime, you all raised some really good questions at the time that we heard from the Bird Scooter Company. And what we've tried to do with this ordinance is to address it in less detail at the ordinance level just to allow the, the permission for them to operate in the city. And then the administrative rules are the, the, will be what guides their, what they are able to do on the ground. I don't know if I need to go into a whole bunch of detail. If you've had a chance to take a look at, at the ordinance, there is some state law that guides how electric scooters can operate here in Oregon, such as the riders need to be 16 years or older. They're not allowed to operate on the sidewalk. We would also prohibit them from being operated in our parks. And I'm trying to think of anything else that I wanted to say. We have not yet designated any city-designated parking areas or staging areas. And I think that's something that we're going to work on together with Bird Scooters so that we have, we know that where they're going to be staging and setting up as they reposition the scooter fleet. The administrative rules say that they would start with a fleet of 50 to 100 scooters. And as I mentioned, as we work with Bird, we'll be figuring out a little bit more about what happens on the ground. So rather than go through a great detail about what's in the ordinance, because I'm going to assume that you've read it, I would, I'd answer any questions that you have, or if you're curious about what this might look like.
Okay, Counselor Lopez.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for that overview, and thank you very much for the very thorough staff report on this. You know, while I'm, I'm incredibly excited to see this augment our current, current transportation options as an alternative transportation to utilizing traditional vehicles, I do have a, do have a question or concern about the logistics of the, of the helmet provision with it. It does say that all riders would, would be required to ride the scooters in the street, not on sidewalks, and it does require helmets. And I'm very much in favor of both of these. I, I guess I'm just, just looking for, you know, any answers to how this has been implemented from an educational angle in other communities. When I see these in, in other places in Golly, I'll, I'll admit to having ridden some, ridden something like this in, in another city before without a helmet myself, not knowing that, and I think I did it on the sidewalk too, not knowing that these were potentially things that I needed to do there. So how, how do we better educate people before others make the same, make the same mistakes that I did?
Well, I'm going to answer this in two ways. One is, I think that when you heard from our scooter, our e-scooter representative when she came in April, one of the things that the Bird Scooter Company will do as they launch will be to ensure that the riders have information on the app, on the application when they're signing up for the scooter that, that basically has the rider agree to the provisions, including riding with a helmet and not on the sidewalk. Now, that's, I, you know, I can say, we all understand that in practice that may not, practically, that may not actually come to pass. So with the launch, Bird is agreeing to do some community education that looks more like promotion of what, of how to use the service properly. They will promote it through the app as riders sign up. And then on every scooter, there's information that includes sort of the basic rules about what's required for them to ride. So that's, that's what we've got in terms of education at this point.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Belts.
So in, in the past, because I'm going to put my work hat on now. In the past, when we've promoted either e-scooter or bike programs in communities, we then work with a helmet provider to see if we can get someone to come into the community and either sell helmets inexpensively, or we give the riders information on where they can acquire those helmets inexpensively. Oftentimes, we will even work with fire department to do an outreach event and give helmets away if we can get a hold of them. So I'll be in touch with Bird and make sure that if that's a concern, because we don't want somebody, granted, they have to be 16 and over and they have to pay for the service. However, I would hate for not having a helmet to be the barrier for someone.
I have also seen in communities where not just Bird, but other scooter companies operate, a, you know, provision of sort of a community helmet rack, where if, you know, there's just publicly available helmets that are, are available for borrowing. Not sure that's great in the public health, you know, crisis that we're in at the moment, but it's, I've seen that as well.
So just like the life jackets at the river, same idea.
Yep.
Yes, Counselor Carey.
With respect to the ordinance, and by the way, I share Counselor Lopez's enthusiasm for this. I think this would be awesome. I'm, I'm really looking forward to little drag races up and down. But as, as I read it, I wondered if we'd want to take a look on the first page. Actually, it's page three of four, item number five. It, it appears as a couple of words missing there. A person shall not park or leave a stand-up scooter, a stand-up motor-assisted scooter designated as a no-parking area, I think, in an area.
In a, yeah.
Probably should, in an area that is designated as a parking. And then that seems to be a bit redundant with item E on the second page.
That's a good catch.
By B, they seem to be saying the same thing. And, and, and then the substantive one that I wondered about was, A, on that same page, it talks about that the scooters parked upright, et cetera, in such a manner as not to impede or impair access to a variety of things, including bicycle racks. I sort of wonder if a bicycle rack might not be a bad place to put them.
Many, many communities designate the bike racks as the, as either the designated parking space or the place where the scooters are positioned when they start for the day. So I think the goal with section A is really to keep, to keep the scooters out of the way, but not in a, in a way that doesn't, you know, like impede something. But it doesn't, I, you know, I don't think, I think the idea is you don't want them hanging on the bicycle racks and, or blocking the bicycle racks, but they could definitely be used as parking areas.
Yeah, okay. I mean, so adjacent to would be all right, just not, yeah.
For its intended purpose of parking the scooter, but not just heat up by the.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that's unfortunately, the image you have is heated up, and it's not to be that.
That would be impeding the other use, so.
And then, and then I, I was a little troubled by D on that, you know, 5D, I guess it is. And it talks about, again, parking scooters on blocks without sidewalks only if the travel lane and a six-foot pedestrian clear zone are not impeded. I, I guess I wonder how many streets we have that that could comply with that.
I will admit that we have not done a comprehensive analysis of this, the places where we have sidewalks and don't have sidewalks where, in terms of where this ordinance would apply. But I think that what, I think what we were trying to do here is if you think about streets that are outside the downtown and in our residential areas, and it's not going to be a perfect science, but we're trying to make sure that they're not parked in the middle of the street, nor parked right next to somebody's yard. And so this was an effort to, it was to have the scooters end up in a, you know, in a place that they were far enough away from the travel lane where, where a car would go, and also not still blocking a place where people would walk. And if this is an artful way of putting that together, you're certainly welcome to amend it, or we can, we can rethink it.
I don't have.
Or start it, start with this and we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. And, and the other, you know, I mean, yeah, that's good. Now, and it sounds like the administrative rules are to come. And so there's, so we're not really entertaining any discussion on that at the moment.
The administrative rules are implemented through our actions. So it doesn't require council action, but we wanted you to be able to see the, basically, the guidance that we were giving the company to operate as they apply for a license. So they are attached to your packet after the ordinance. And you have comments, or I, I would, I would welcome the council's input about the rules. It's meant to go, they're meant to go into greater detail about the way the company can operate.
It, it's, and I'll, and I'll be brief, and I, and I may submit some things to you, Marty, in writing. But a couple of things that I did note on, under licensing, completed application, a written hiring plan that explains how the program will operate, including education. It's a lot more than just hiring. It seemed like more an operational plan than a hiring plan.
Right, so that.
Just seeming, seeming.
And the way Bird described the way that they would operate in Monmouth is that they would be hiring a local fleet manager. And so it's, some of it will be about how that person does their work. And I think that's why we're referencing the hiring plan. And I think there was a wish when the council met with the Bird representative most recently that if it was possible to hire locally, I think we were interested in knowing whether someone from the area would be that fleet manager.
And then, and then it got a bit confusing. And, and I'll read this and I'll submit this to you. But I got a little confused in terms of where you could and where you couldn't park and what the, the public ride away. And certain areas within the ride away seem to be okay and otherwise. And it just became confusing. And then, and then we talk about parking must be done in designated areas, but these are dockless devices. So are we going to?
They described to us that they would have designated areas. That's how they described it.
Not exclusive, and if they did, I'd love that. But I, but I, yeah.
They described to us these sort of parking areas that they would work with us to figure out where those would be. So maybe that's what I, that's what I pictured when I was.
Yeah, well, that'd be great if that, if that were to come about. I didn't get that same, that same thing.
I would offer too, that the city attorney and I were, when we talked about this, about, I think we understand that scooter riders are not necessarily going to take their scooters to a designated parking area, park them there. But when Bird starts the day and deploys the scooters, or when we, or when they're repositioned, that the city would designate a place where that would go. And so if we, and again, if, if we haven't clarified that well enough in the administrative rules, and I will admit, even in talking to the Bird representative, we agreed that we would work this out with implementation. Sounds like we should clarify.
And, and then the last thing, I, I think we're, based on this, it appears that we're putting a lot of sort of pressure on them with some of the things, especially relative to the accessibility component, a multilingual customer service, a website and signage. I mean, if all that's multilingual, that could be pretty extensive. Multi suggests more than two. And whether or not that can be done, provided in a customer service manner, a fluid local manager.
I think that's how they operate business anyway. We, we've put things in here, it seems, that they said they already do. Because they have businesses in all these other cities and they've already done all these.
I seem to recall statements like that.
Yeah, well, that, that would be good. I, I was concerned that this would be laying things on that, because I didn't, I didn't hear that and I wasn't as attentive as, as the rest. But there, there seems to be, I'd be really interested to see how some of these things are implemented. I mean, they're all great. I can concur 100%. It's just whether or not that's something they're going to be able to deliver on or not.
I think we recognize that this will be uncharted territory. We'll, there's going to be some things that we're going to learn as we implement, and we'll have to adjust.
Sure, yeah, good. Looking forward to it.
That's why they're in the ARs, so we, they don't come back to us. Our city attorney, Mr. Shutterly.
That was exactly the point that I was going to make, that we made a purposeful choice to really keep the ordinance, the code language, pretty much as an outline for the licensing procedure, and then authorize the details to be worked out in these administrative rules because this is uncharted territory. And by doing it through administrative rule, it would give Marty flexibility to work with Bird in ironing these things out without having to come back multiple times to the council for ordinance amendments.
Great, thank you, sir. And Counselor Oberst.
I'd just like to circle back to John's page 404D, Streets Without Sidewalks. The way I read that, if there's a curb, there's got to be six feet next to the curb with, that's unobstructed for pedestrians, and then a scooter, which starts to be right out in the middle of the street, even though it's not in traveling. I'd encourage it to be right as close to the curb as it could be. And people, you know, as long as it's parallel to the, to the travel line, people have plenty of room to get around that. I'd be really concerned about it being out in the middle of the street. So, you know, I think that's one to talk with our PD and Public Works and others about the best way to structure that so that we don't wind up with scooters six feet from the curb. I think that my, my, sort of, if I had one, where would I park it? I'd park it right up next to the curb to get it out of the way. You know, I didn't know that there was a rule. I couldn't, that would be my sort of intuitive response. So, anyway.
So if, I mean, I'll entertain amendments to the ordinance as you adopt it, if you'd like to, you know, that.
And this is the first reading tonight anyway, so.
Well, I agree with the mayor that this is a starting point. We go with it and adjust if need be.
Cece, Madam Mayor, I can just, on that point, we looked at a lot of ordinances. I think this is a fairly standard provision. And I think the policy behind it is a preference of putting the scooter at risk over putting a pedestrian at risk that has to step out around maybe one, maybe two scooters and closer into the travel lane. I think that's the policy that this reflects. There are no good resolution where you don't have a sidewalk. But in terms of protection, I think the policy behind this is to protect the safety of pedestrians at the expense of scooters if it comes to that.
Cece, if I could just reply.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes, on, on the note of that, while, while I do, do support, do support protecting the pedestrians as opposed to the scooter per se, gosh, six feet seems excessive too. Our, our sidewalks aren't six feet in width. So I, it, it does, it does seem like there's not a perfect answer. Ideally, the perfect answer would be to, to get sidewalks in place and in usable fashion throughout our city, which I fashion throughout our city, which I know that we've, you know, discussed at, at length in, in, in previous meetings. But, but yeah, something, something still doesn't feel quite right there as far as, as far as that provision.
I would entertain a motion, or I would entertain a consensus to return that to staff for clarification before we adopt an ordinance.
I'm going to move a motion.
And we can, we just can still bring it back in second reading next time, next time.
Right.
So, so we need a motion here, then. I move to approve ordinance 1398.
It's, it, it's just a first reading.
And I, I would suggest that I'll work with Marty and, and Russ and Chief Haynes. We're involved in the review of this. Take a couple of points that you made and look at those and perhaps bring back amendments, certainly to the missing few words in, in that one section. But yeah, while we're, we can work with staff to consider what the comments were tonight and maybe bring back a different ordinance in a few places.
Yes, we don't need a motion. All right. So I declare first reading of ordinance 1398, an ordinance adopting new provisions regulating providers of stand-up electric scooters and the operation of stand-up motor-assisted scooters. And we will perhaps see a few changes before our second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last action item this evening, and thank you, Counselor Shutterly, for your assistance with that, is from the lovely Suzanne Dufner. This is a grant application for more state assistance in a program for housing development and production. So kind of keeping with our theme of the work we're doing with affordable housing, and I will turn this over to Suzanne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council members. Yes, this is a request for council to consider supporting a letter for us to submit a grant application to the Department of Land Conservation Development to prepare a housing production strategy. The DLCD currently has a grant assistance program open and available. And they have reached out to the city of Monmouth to see if we were interested in this. So we've had some discussions with them. Let them know that we've actually completed a housing needs analysis just recently in 2019. It identified some draft housing strategies. And we're kind of at that stage of, of trying to prioritize and implement those further, so we can actually affect the, the housing stock and have more of that provided. So this is, I believe, consistent with the council priorities for this fiscal year that have been set to encourage more affordable housing development. I believe that the housing production strategy would help us come up with more specific, a more specific strategy with some timelines and resources on what exactly we're going to accomplish. There, in terms of the grant itself, there's no formal match requirement for it, but they do indicate that, you know, it shows the commit, the community's commitment if we, if we do put in, you know, in-kind contribution at a minimum to be able to help with public outreach and meeting coordination. Certainly cash matches is also welcome. And so if we were to go submit this, we would certainly provide that in-kind contribution of staff's time to assist with the grant work. And then also some, some of the funding that would be needed. First, for example, for translation services for the materials that go out for public outreach. So applications are due June 30th, and if awarded, we'd be able to hire a consultant and start work in September of this year. And then all work has to be completed by June 2022. I will point out, this is, this is completely voluntary. You're, you're not compelled or required to do a housing production strategy. There are some cities that are over the population threshold that have met the criteria by the, the state requirements that do have to, that are mandatory, that they prepare these housing production strategies. This is more of, does Monmouth want to be proactive and see this as a resource to help with some of those council priorities that we've talked about earlier regard, with regards to housing? So so you do have alternatives listed there to approve the letter of support. There's one that's been drafted and included in the council packet and direct staff to submit a grant, grant application by the deadline to produce the housing production strategy. Or you can take no action on that. And staff estimates that it will take approximately 15 to 20 hours to prepare the grant application. So, and there's a sample motion for you if, when you're ready for that.
Thank you, Suzanne. Comments or questions about housing production strategies, Counselor McKeel?
I'm ready for the motion. This is a great idea. Thank you for doing this. But then I'll wait, because obviously there might be questions.
And you can, and anyone can always put a motion on the floor, and if there's a second, we can always have discussion after the motion. So please feel free.
I'm going to do that, then. Okay. I move approval of a letter of support for the city of Monmouth to submit a grant application to prepare a housing production strategy. And thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel. And I'm going to give the second, Counselor Lopez. So indeed, the aforementioned questions, anyone? Counselor Carey.
You said this was voluntary. You brought it forward, and thank you for doing so. But do you have the bandwidth to do this? I mean, you know, getting the application in there is one thing, then the work starts. I mean, that's a legitimate, honest.
Oh, it's absolutely legitimate. Yeah, good, good question. Thank you for raising that. We also have the second phase of the transportation growth management, the code update. Right. So I, yeah, I, we have consultant services that would do the heavy lifting portion of the work. And so, yes, it's going to have demands on our time, but thankfully, the budget committee and the council approved a staff person to help me. And so Elizabeth Pondgratz is our new associate, I guess I can't call her new anymore, but she's our associate planner. And so she, you know, be helping take the lead on this and doing the coordination. So, yeah, I, I believe it's, it's important enough work, you know, that it's, it's again, consistent with the council priorities that, that it's something that would also help us as well. So, yeah, thank you for asking that.
All right. Any other questions? Then I'll, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I see unanimous support for this, so we move forward. And again, thank you for bringing it forward. It really is going to be a great additional piece. All this seems sort of a bureaucratic way to figure out what kind of housing we want and how we're going to move forward. But the nice thing is this comes with money, so, and support. And certainly having folks at DLCD offer to us to be engaged, because they feel that this, this is something we can commit to, I think is a great, certainly shows their confidence in it. So appreciate that, Suzanne. Thank you. All right. With that, we come to the reports. And I just have a couple of brief things for the mayor's report. One is, we recently received our statement of activity for the 2020 year from the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation. Years ago, when Monmouth celebrated its sesquicentennial, 150th anniversary, they raised money for various activities, and some of that money was left over. Scott MacArthur, who was a longtime city attorney and is our unofficial or official historian, puts some additional funds into the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation for the Monmouth Bicentennial Fund. His goal is to have that money earn for 50 years so that at a time when we go to celebrate our bicentennial, as he said, we would be able to throw a hell of a party. So that money ha, was put away, $2,056 were put in to that fund, and our statement from the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation has a year-end balance of $6,779.41. That's starting to be a good party. And we, as we get closer to that, we'll probably encourage donations to that fund. But I just wanted to share that great news. And as always, thanks Scott MacArthur for his foresightedness in these things. Tonight, I am wearing a T-shirt, bilingual T-shirt that is, mentions courage equals change. And this is a project of the Central School District, Salem Health and Polk County Health, particularly Polk County Behavioral and Mental Health Services. There was an event tonight at the high school that was a release of a video that has been made featuring students and families in our community to bring awareness to the importance of healthcare and mental and behavioral healthcare. That video will be released to the community and be sharing it through various outlets. But it is certainly a, a concern and an issue of our times. People have been obviously severely impacted in health outcomes this past year. And we want to bring awareness to these issues and the resources that are available to help folks. So courage equals change will be coming to a video screen near you, and I hope everyone has an opportunity to see that. Finally, I really want to acknowledge that this weekend, past weekend, we got one of those sort of back-to-normal feels. Western Oregon University held an in-person commencement. 700 students, as opposed to the normal 1,100, participated in a live commencement ceremony. And I was able to be there for part of that. It consisted of students and their families driving up in decorated vehicles, getting out, coming into the stadium in small cohorts. The families got to stand right down on the track in front of the dais as the students crossed to graduate. And it was great. It, it brought back that sort of excitement and, and what we know. We, we will have next year as students return in person. So a really great opportunity to celebrate the graduating class of 2021, as well as some folks who graduated in 2020 and had a completely virtual ceremony. So they got to walk across as well. And congratulations to the Western Oregon University class of 2021. Reports of boards and commissions. What, what have all of our, those volunteers been busy doing? I will start with Counselor Oberst.
At first, I have to say I had two cross that stage. I had one 2020 graduate and one 2021.
They were both in the afternoon, and I didn't get to see them. I was only there.
It was a nice, given circumstances of a nice ceremony. As I said, shortest graduation I've ever been to, no speeches.
I, I think there will be parts of this that will keep forever. We had great discussion about that among the Board of Trustees and the leadership of the university.
So I'd like to start by noting that the Parks Board meeting for June was canceled. The next meeting will be the 14th of July. We have been moved, we have moved the meeting time forward to six o'clock. The other meeting I had is the once-a-quarter meeting of Traffic Safety Commission. Old news, we've requested a speed study on 99W South down there by Martin beyond, where the speed picks up to 40 and then 50. And we have a street that enters the highway out there now. And so we're requesting, oh, I have a look at that. No update on when they're going to come to help us with that particular study. Also, we have a Safe Routes to School Planning Grant. And that outreach for public input on that Safe Routes grant has been postponed till fall because schools have not been open. So we'll have that outreach coming up in the fall. New business, we have the 99W Bike-Ped Study is just getting underway. And this is not just about safety, but also how to improve the user experience. There will be online surveys coming up. There's going to be a dedicated webpage. Various other outreach efforts, so keep your eyes peeled for that. One concern that was raised about 99W and church, I think we talked about that last meeting, and ODOT was on the spot quickly with diagonal striping that did absolutely no good. People continued to use the little triangle as a left turn lane. So they quickly came in again and put in the little plastic candlesticks that have completely screened off that area. Folks are still squeezing around the end of that area to turn left into Church Street. So I'm not convinced that it solved the problem. We do have rapid rectangular flashing beacons on the capital improvement plan, and I can't recall whether that's this year or next year, but eventually we'll have those beacons there. We also had a concern raised about parking along Madrona on the east side of 99W, where people are turning in and immediately, there was a camper park there for a while. And so it was a real tight squeeze to make the corner, look out for incoming traffic, look out for traffic on 99. So we will be having brought to us in future points and no parking along that area to try to push the parking back away from 99 a little bit. Traffic Safety Commission will be coming to council in July to talk to us about what's going on. Next meeting of this group is on September 13th at seven, and theoretically, by then, we should be live and in person at the police station. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Selena Solivero.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was not able to attend the June 2nd Historic Commission meeting. I had a graduating senior at the Senior Awards, so I attended that event. And I do want to say that Central School District did an amazing job with graduation this year, and we were able to be outside away from each other, but it was a beautiful event, fantastic speakers, and it was, it was very well done. So, so I want to commend Central School District for that, and my senior had a wonderful time. So I, Suzanne Dufner was kind enough to type up the minutes, and I will briefly go through the Historic Commission. So for the minutes, the display, the historic scavenger hunt, and that went really well. Around 30 participants actually returned their completed scavenger hunt flyers. And, and the display is going to continue to stay up for a while. It's very beautiful if you have not walked by. And also, the mural project that for the Ross IGA building is published. It's on the city website. There's been email notifications sent out, local artist associations, galleries, Western Art Department Oissue, pretty much everywhere that we could think of. And the proposals are due June 28th. And then the Historic Photo Archive Project. The city hired a recent Western Oregon University history graduate as an intern to work on a Historic Photo Archive project. And so that will be ongoing. And then Columbus Day Storm Memories. So the, we've, the commission discussed Columbus Day Storm Memories from Betty Plute's book. And also looking at how to put that together, asking the intern to research more information. Also combining that with how the Columbus Day Storm affected our migrant workers and farmers in the area, and looking at different perspectives of how to bring this to light as another event for the Historic Commission. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. And Counselor Lopez.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I, I do not have a, a board and commission report per se, more more a counselor comment. I, I would like to note that the Senate's just passed bill to establish Juneteenth. This is the day that marks the end of slavery in the United States as a national holiday. This was passed unanimously by the Senate and is now moving to the House. Hopefully, hopefully they will pass it as well. A little background on Juneteenth, it's celebrated on June 19th. It's also known as Freedom Day, and it recognizes and marks the emancipation of formerly enslaved African Americans. It's commemorating the date in 1865, when slaves in Galveston, Texas first learned of their newfound freedom. So I'm, I'm just incredibly excited to hear this, this progress on a national level, especially with the unanimous passage of the bill. And wanted to make sure that we had a chance to celebrate that as a city here and recognize it. And wanted to make sure that we had a chance to celebrate that as a city here and recognize it.
Thank you. Yes, and I do always save council comments for the end, so you would have been able to get that in, but thanks for that. Councilor Solerero, another commissioner.
A point on those council comments, it wasn't in the agenda. Normally, it is noted in the agenda. It was not listed in the agenda I received, so that's why.
I always write it in. I will always ask that. That one I try not to skip over because we do have a lot of great announcements usually, so. Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Carrie?
Briefly on the planning commission, something that we initiated with the planning commission, and that had to do with the developer request on the side yard setbacks. That's gone to a public hearing on that. And I believe that's the business item on the agenda for the planning commission meeting tomorrow. Once they dispense with that, they will get the pearls of wisdom dispensed by one Lane Shutterly on how to conduct themselves as counselors. So we've all heard it, but if you need a little more dose of Lane, dial in. It's seven o'clock tomorrow night. That concludes it.
Planning Commissioner 101. All right. Any other reports for us this evening before we go to Marty?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of items for the city manager's report tonight. I reported on Friday that we, our last report on Friday was that the city managers and also our police chiefs of Monmouth and Independence have continued to meet with a second volunteer group who wish to hold a Fourth of July parade. So time's getting on here, and planning has resumed. And I have received a permit application for a parade and a street closure that is incomplete. So both of the cities have decided to ask this group to submit a complete application by tomorrow, Wednesday, close of business. Or will cities let them know the time has run out to be able to hold a parade this year? So I'm not sure at this point whether that's going to happen or not, but I will keep you posted. I wanted to give a shout out to Polk County. And this morning, Governor Brown, or this afternoon, Governor Brown announced updates to our county risk levels. And Polk County has made it to 64.24% of first dose vaccinations. So we'll be approved as a county to move to lower risk as soon as we achieve 65%. And Polk County also completed their equity, the vaccine equity plan that's required for OHA. So we're headed in the right direction. And then finally, just to add on to the mayor's comment about the video and the importance of mental health services, our talks at a staff level continue with our healthcare providers, Pacific Source, Polk County Behavioral Health, Western Oregon University, and Salem Health West Valley Hospital about ways that we can bring all types of services, healthcare services to our community, notably behavioral health and mental health services, and also telehealth and primary care. So we'll keep you posted about how those talks are going as they proceed.
On that note, Salem Health has announced, we just got notified that Salem Health acquired the Willamette Valley Physicians Partnership. And that gave Salem Health two facilities, the Monmouth Main Street Facility and the former Monmouth Independence Clinic in Independence near the high school. They eventually, during the pandemic, when they closed most doctors' visits, they closed that clinic. And they indicated they would not be reopening the Independence Clinic. It was, the facility itself needed a lot of work. However, and they also operate in the school-based health center across from Central High School, very close to that. However, we just received an email from Brandon Schmidtgall, who is the Chief Administrative Officer of West Valley Hospital. And they have seen, in fact, there is a need for additional services and service providers. And he has indicated that they will be rehabilitating that Independence Clinic and restaffing it. So there will be some additional healthcare providers on the Independence side within months. So that was great news about that. Yeah, thanks for that reminder. All right, yes.
As the incoming board chair of Salem Health, starting in July, I can tell you that was a miss. I think staff didn't appreciate the special relationship between Monmouth and Independence. Even though the Monmouth clinic is only a mile down the road from the closed Independence Clinic, it's a world apart. And so I actually was really staff, pleased that staff took the advice of the community and is reopening that.
Great, thank you, Lane, and thank you for representing Polk County interests on that board. All right, other council comments, yes?
A question for the city manager, Marty. In your Friday notes, you indicated that the contract negotiations are underway with the police union. And will any of that come to the council for discussion? In the past, we've had some discussion centering around salary and wages and benefits primarily.
We do plan to bring at the July, at one of the July meetings, an executive session that will include our representative. So I'm thinking it's going to be the July 6th meeting. We'll be coming to council and executive session.
Good, because in the past, we've sort of focused on just that wages and benefits. And I think there are some, there's some other elements that we need to at least have, be aware of and discuss. And perhaps not do anything about it, but just be acknowledge what is in the agreement that we have.
All right. Any other comments? Sure, go ahead, Councilor.
So the 64.24% number was thrown out earlier before the meeting began. So I ran the math real quick. We need about 660 Polk County residents to get the jab. And we can go to low risk unless you think there's not a need anymore because we're so close to 65%. I am aware of three people in the last three weeks who have gotten sick with what is presumed to be COVID. I asked all of them to please go get tested. I don't know that anybody did. But the virus is still out there, so if you have not gotten vaccinated, if you think that I'm young, so I don't have anything to worry about, these folks were all younger, get the shot, please. Let's get this thing done so we can lose the masks, lose the distancing, get back to a normal lifestyle in Polk County and the rest of Oregon.
Yep.
I'd like to see Polk County get to 65 before the state gets to 70.
Well, we were in the top four for a long time, and we've dropped out of the top 20. So yes, we need to get going, especially because we will have summer school and our concerns about having families and folks let up too soon and the effects on our summer school. Roxanne?
I'd just like to remind people that, you know, Chariots launched their Route 45, which is the, replaced the Flex Route. They launched it in January, so we're coming up on just about six months of service. There is an online survey where we're asking people, especially in Monmouth and Independence, since that's what that service serves, and Dallas, to take the survey. And you go to chariots.org and find the survey and take that and just give your opinions, attitudes, thoughts on the route. Is it working? Is it not working? What would you like to see differently? So I can also, if it's all right, send a link that maybe the city will have it as well.
You can do that, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Yes, Councilor Carrie?
I'll be brief. And I want to remind Councilor Belz that she was going to coordinate a, the different city council or city councils going to somewhere for lunch, somewhere riding the old 45 bus or whatever.
My concern will be waiting until we no longer have social distance requirements on the buses because we could not get all of us on one of those buses right now. When the CDC changes that, then we will do that.
The more time, the more time you have planned, the higher the expectations.
It's not going to be a trolley, no matter how hard I try.
Just two things that I, and I, there's new information out about the roundabout up at Cloud Corner and Highway 99. There was a variety of feedback that came to ODOT. They put that into their planning, and they've released their latest one. And, you know, I'm hoping that Monmouth, our Traffic Safety Commission can weigh in on that. We're the ones that have the most impact. I mean, we're the ones that, I mean, Dallas, that's no big deal to them. Independence is out of the loop. And, you know, the plan looks good. It's probably not until, you know, 2024. But nonetheless, it would be, in my mind, a real boon to travel up and down this corridor. And finally, I just want to thank our police department, our CSO in particular, for their responsiveness to me filing a complaint against the property on the corner, southwest corner of Jackson and Broad. It's the one that I complain about every year. It's the one that's got the bailable hay. It's the one that has a building in the back with broken windows, and it's an eyesore. And we're, both at Suzanne's level, she's doing some investigating there. CSO people and police are trying to contact the owner to get that place cleaned up. I would, I would, you know, when the urban renewal district takes public comment, I would be interested in suggesting that we try to find a way to buy that and turn it into something productive instead of the eyesore that it is. And, but all that aside, nice job by our city staff for their responsiveness to that. And it's now up to the property owner to respond, and whether they do or not, we'll see. But nice job on the part of our personnel.
All right. At this time, we are going to move into executive session. And we will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transaction discussions. We are not meeting on the performance evaluation of a public officer tonight. We didn't think we'd have time to do that. So our executive session is held pursuant to 192.6602E Real Property Transaction Discussions, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room, and no decision will be made in executive session. At the end of the session, we will return to open session. We will welcome the audience back, and it is not anticipated. We will take action after returning from executive session. We don't have any members of the public in the room. We have one member of the press, our staff, Suzanne Duffner and Marty Wine will be staying with us. And our attorney, Lane Shutterly, will continue in with us. We will.
What?
Videographer.
Zach leaves.
Director Cooper will be joining us also.
And Director Cooper will be, staff will be included. And our city recorder, but all others will be asked to leave.